And. Mister Reese, do you want me to call upon you for this? Or Andrea? Okay, Mister Reese, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coriel.
Yeah.
Councilmember Faukeham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Homer.
Yeah.
Mayor Canaver. Councilmember Maddox. Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Mayor Canaver, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Garcia?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Maddox?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, Mister Reese, item number four.
Bond capacity analysis presentation by Lorenzo Boyd, Managing Director, Stephen.
Mister Boyd.
Everyone.
Good evening. Yes.
They do, and I am going to um.
That's yeah, that's fancy over there.
My assistant made them just because she's been with twenty-five years, so she just does it.
So Mister Boyd, I apologize, but anytime you step to the podium, you have to work and work means that you have to press the button the entire time that you're talking. Um. And and that's, yes, I'm sorry. Okay.
Can you guys? Hey, great. Uh, thanks for having me, everyone, uh, to the city council work session. Uh, my name is Lorenzo Boyd, Managing Director of Public Finance, and what I'll do. Uh, can I go through the presentation um that you have in front of you to explain all the details? I think the last time I was here, we kind of briefly touched on a couple of different things in terms of uh, the bond capacity analysis and your current debt service fund levy. So what I'll do is kind of go through each presentation. And uh, from where we're opening up for any questions. So the first page. So the first page, and I did have the pleasure of uh speaking with um Michael and Lexi about this on Friday, so we kind of went through the presentation and asked the questions that they may have had. Uh, thanks for actually blowing that up. Um, I'm getting a little old in my age, so it works perfect. So the first page is what you call a debt map. This is the city of Maplewood in terms of all of the general obligation bonds that you currently out outstanding. You'll see there that there was a six million dollar um issue back in two thousand fifteen. It was issued in March of two thousand fifteen for six million dollars. Uh, your payments, um, so you'll see there that your payments are done uh annually in terms of your debt principal payments. And what you'll see now is that after the original issuance in March of two thousand fifteen, there's three million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of bonds remaining from that original issue in two thousand fifteen. Those are all the general obligation bonds uh that you have outstanding at this current point. Um, and then you'll see those bonds were rated double A uh by Standard and Poor's. Um, if you just kind of move up just slightly.
Sure. This way?
Yep, thank you. So what you'll see there, um, those bonds have maturity from two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty, two thousand thirty-five, two thousand thirty-five being the final maturity. You'll see the different interest rates uh applicable to each maturity. Um, at today's, you'll see there at the, at the bottom of that screen, it has a next call date. That's when your bonds can be issued. Um, sorry, can be refinanced for savings on a tax exempt basis, including tax exempt basis. So we're looking at December two thousand twenty-three, where those bonds can be refinanced for savings on a tax exempt basis. Um, and that was a new rule that was implemented about five years ago, prior to five years ago. When I first got into this business, you could refinance your bonds uh more than ninety days to their call date. So you can refinance those bonds twice when I first got into the business in nineteen ninety-six. And then they changed that into one time, but you can refinance your bonds more than ninety days to their call date. And now about five years ago, that rule changed again, and there was no longer any advanced refunding, so you have to wait to refinance your bonds on a tax exempt basis, because these bonds are tax exempt within ninety days of their call date. So you will not be eligible to refinance those bonds until December of two thousand twenty-three on a tax exempt basis. Um, just looking at those current interest rates, uh, I'll just tell you now on the front end, not less, we do a refinancing that severely kind of takes off some of the maturities of that issue. Um, those bonds are great rates in two thousand fifteen, so rates are currently above that at this kind of point. So if rates stay the same, I don't see you being able to refinance those bonds for savings, just because those rates are lower than the current market um in terms of where the market is right now currently. Now, and this is, I want to open it up to any questions. If you have any questions, just feel free just to jump in and ask those questions. Over to the, over to the right of that, uh, you have the assessed valuation, so that's the debt capacity of the city. So what you'll see there, cities can issue up to ten percent of general obligation bonds for general improvements. And then they can issue ten percent of their assessed valuation for road and sewer improvements or either water, electrical improvements. Uh, so the total indebtedness of the city cannot exceed twenty percent. So when you take those two factors, take those two factors into consideration, your ordinary debt limit based on your assessed valuation of ten percent is twenty-one million, five hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And then your additional additional debt limit is up to ten percent for additional improvements, either road and sewer improvements or uh water, electrical, or light improvements. So it gives you total capacity of really over forty-three million. You currently have outstanding three million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, so that leaves you with a total debt capacity in terms of geo-bonds of thirty-nine million, fifteen, six hundred and ninety thousand. So my other conversations with uh Michael and Lexi as well, that's not to say that you can issue thirty-nine million of bonds at your current tax rate, but if you were to raise your tax rate to a certain level, that is the legal authorized limit per the state of Missouri up to twenty percent that you could issue in general obligation bonds. Next page, yep. Thank you. The next page, uh, something I started putting together some years ago, it's called the tax levy. And you'll see there uh going from left to right, uh, there are two columns. You have tax year. Um, the city sets their tax rate uh in September of the calendar year, and it's used to pay debt service the following year. So you'll see there, let's just kind of take a look at two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, going from left to right. You'll see there, you'll set your tax rate in September of this year uh for the debt service in two thousand twenty-four. Um, the assessed valuation is two hundred and seventy-one million. You'll see that really large increase that you've had, preliminary increase of, uh, I think that's twenty-six percent, almost twenty-six and a half percent. You'll see there uh also that your current debt service levy is twenty cent, twenty point one cents. That generates tax revenue of right around five hundred and thirty thousand. If you kind of just scroll up just slightly, so you can see that ninety-seven point zero four that I'm uh in terms of that. So that ninety-seven point four that I'm using there for tax collection, that's just the five-year average that is delinquent and current taxes. So I think that's easily defensible in terms of what you kind of use going forward. That's just a simple five-year average of your last five years uh collection on delinquent and current taxes. And I'm doing the same things um in terms of the assessed valuation growth. You'll see there, I'm using zero percent, but you'll see there, based on your last five years, your last five years of assessed valuation growth is six point two-three percent. And you can just go back slightly down. Okay, so then you'll see there your aggregate debt service is three hundred, let's look at two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. That shows for next year is three hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. That means your current required levy is fourteen point nine cents. You have twenty point one currently um uh currently in place right now. Um, so if you wanted your actual, if you wanted your actual um that number, and let me go forward to the, the next column, use of fund balance. So because your required levy is fourteen point nine, you're levying twenty point one, you're gonna have an excess revenue that you're gonna grow your fund balance by a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars uh next calendar year. That's assuming these assumptions come in um the way they are. So if you wanted to actually just have that use of fund balance where you didn't add any money to your debt service fund, you would only need to levy fourteen point nine cents. But that's just to show me that all these things stay, stay the same. And you'll just see there that uh your fund balance grows, and we started with your um, your projected fund balance uh this year. Um, when I talk with uh Michael in terms of five hundred and eighty thousand, uh, your remaining payments in two thousand twenty, twenty-three is fifty-five thousand, seven fifty. So your estimated balance at the end of the year is five hundred and twenty-four thousand. Any questions on that page? Okay. What I wanted to do here is sh- show you the calendar, uh, the election calendars. So with fifty of being an odd number year, two thousand twenty-three, one of the unique things about the state of Missouri, there are different voting requirements for general obligation bonds. So in odd number years, you can only go to the voters in April for a four-seventh voter approval. All the other dates are two-thirds. That's only an odd number of years. In even numbered years, when you do general obligation bonds, you have three bites of the apple to get four-sevenths, and you want to do four-sevenths because obviously it's fifty-seven point one percent voter approval. Whereas the two-thirds are sixty-six percent. So most folks try to actually align themselves with those four-sevenths voter approval dates. And in two thousand twenty-four, if the city should want to go to the uh April election, you'll see there that you have to have your ballot language to the county by January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. So presumably you will uh talk, you will put that language together with your attorney uh and the bond council attorney. Um, you'll get them approved by the city council uh at one of your council member meetings. Presumably, you probably do that in December to approve that official language. And then uh the city, which your bond council would help you as well, file that information before the January twenty-third deadline. Any questions? The next page, what I really wanted to show here is your history of your debt service fund. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, two thousand, I'm in prior, I'm sorry, you were at twenty-eight cents. It went down to twenty-six point one cents. In two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two point six, and at the current level, you have twenty point one cents in terms of your debt service fund. So at the various levels, which we kind of talked about briefly in terms of some of the numbers that you wanted to see in terms of what the city could do at the various tax rates, and and the only thing I did here was look at actually um the since two thousand nineteen, where that levy was at twenty-eight cents. This is not recommending that you go back to those levels at all, keep it at twenty cents, uh twenty point one cents, but at the various levels that the city should look at the various levels before they set their tax rate. This presumably is the amount that the city could issue at the various rates. So if you were to do twenty point one cents, you're looking at about three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. If you're twenty-two point six, you're looking at four million, four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-six point one, five million, five point five million, and twenty-one cents, six million. This is also assuming uh five percent interest rates and zero percent growth in assessed valuation. Those numbers could change. Those numbers are conservative. Um, if you were to do an issue right now, rates would stay the same. You probably would be looking right around four point three percent. So we're a little bit up in terms of just being conservative, but we don't know what interest rates are gonna be in April of two thousand twenty-four. So we just kind of put those numbers higher than that, what current levels are.
Regarding interest rates, um, I just, with your experience and background, what, what have you seen? Do you see like a severe high and low in, you know, the rise or the fall of an interest rate? Does some calamity have to happen for an interest rate to go up high or blow? What do you, what do you see?
Well, the market's kind of um all over the place right now. Just the mo- markets really volatile at this point. When some interest rates fluctuate um as much as thirty basis points or point three percent uh over a two-week span, and then they correct themselves and come back down. Interestingly enough, we've had our economists and we were in Denver all last week, and our national economists uh kind of talked to us about this similar situation. Uh, they expect the Fed to raise interest rates, you know, between now and the end of the year. Sometimes there is a correlation between raising those rates because of those are Fed funds rate that they actually raise. So there is a direct correlation between them raising rates and mini bond rates. It's not apples to apples, or so interest rates are not raising. If they raise those rates twenty-five basis points, that's not to say that municipal bonds are gonna rise twenty-five basis points. But you'll see um that when there's um expectations in the market, in terms of the stock market, sometimes those have negative effects. Sometimes uh negative effects on the, on the bond market, there's could be a, a flight to safety, which may um, which may lower rates. Then also there are other factors that could actually factor into rates, you know, lowering themselves or raising themselves. So you kind of hear about CPI numbers. So when those are housing numbers, when those come out, if they're above or below expectations, some of those things can can affect interest rates. But our economist thinks that uh most of the interest rates are probably gonna remain steady despite some, um relatively steady despite some increases in, in the future.
Have you ever had to advise um a client to wait a week or two when looking at an interest rate?
Oh, uh, absolutely. Uh, when you've, so one of, one of the good things about um, you know, if, if you should go through in terms of putting this on the April ballot, one of the things that I talked about with our underwriter, our underwriters on our trading desk in St. Louis, I talk to them pretty frequently um just about the municipal market. And so they get reads on the market. So just give me an example, if we were, it's usually about a six to eight week process when you sit, when you actually pass the issue. So if you pass the issue in April, um, you can expect if we move forward pretty quickly that you will have your money in hand by June or so. And that's a great time, depending on what type of projects that you're gonna do. But if say for instance, you're um, you're, you're um, we're gonna sell your bonds, let's say, May fifteenth. And we have that on the calendar to sell those bonds on May fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Sometimes our underwriter will say, well, you know, depending on what we're hearing in the market, you know, there may be some impact, there may be some negative news in terms of the housing market. There may be some negative news in terms of CPI. So we would recommend that possibly to see if they could actually speed that process, speed it up or either delay it. So then I'll come back to the city officials and, and give them my feedback in conjunction with my underwriter and say, let's look at some alternatives. Um, and possibly look at, and, and that's the beauty of a negotiated sale in terms of you have the flexibility to kind of um delay or speed up your, your, your transaction as needed based on market conditions.
Mm-hmm.
So your stifles economists say that they believe the Fed's gonna raise the rates this year?
Slightly, yes. Probably another twenty-five basis points.
Do, do they know when? Wait, what?
They're expecting the next quarter, uh, by the fall, the fall, in the fall uh meeting. Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yep. But they're only looking at twenty-five basis points or so. That's their belief. Any questions with that page? And so um that's assuming just a normal twenty-year financing. Um, and you can see the same assumptions that I used on the previous pages, I'm using here in terms of that. Um, but those numbers could change um dramatically uh based on, we would reevaluate these things. So if by the end of the year, interest rates went down significantly, that's just, just by chance, and it straight went down significantly, and now we're looking at a three and a half percent. That number, that's three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. If we're looking at an interest rate of possibly three and a half percent, because interest rates have dropped significantly, that's a hundred and fifty basis points lower than what we're using here. That number could jump up to four million dollars. Or conversely, if interest rates rise and it's six percent, it could, it can deplete that number significantly where that three million, two hundred and fifty thousand could turn into two point five million. So the, the biggest factor here are interest rates. And I did want to be conservative um in terms of, as I mentioned, if you were to issue those bonds right now, you were looking at probably four point three percent. At least on your rating. So this page here is kind of just the next four pages. Just wanted, you remember the, the, the sheet that I showed you, the tax levy uh sheet? Uh, on the previous page in terms of the twenty point one cents. This is just looking at the same uh page, assuming you put three point two, five million of bonds um on the ballot, and you entered all at once at twenty point one cents. You'll see that there, and you can go to the next page, Michael, if you have. And this is just showing uh at four point five million at twenty-two point six cents. You know, said that we're drawing down the fund balance. That's not a huge issue uh in some of these uh analysis. But you'll see that your fund balance still remains healthy at about between at its lowest point fifty percent, even though we're drawing down that fund balance. But again, if you look at this, this is assuming zero percent growth. So if you get any growth, which your average has been well over six percent, those numbers are gonna look differently, and those numbers are gonna be a lot healthier. And then if you look at the next page, that's the five point five million dollar scenario at twenty-six point one cents. And then the following page is if the city should choose to take its levy back up to two thousand nineteen levels of twenty-eight cents, that's a six million dollar um transaction. And you'll see there that it looks a little bit different as well there in terms of you're drawing down your fund balance only one year. And then the following page, I think. You can make that a little smaller. Thank you. You'll see the increases there on the, on the side. Um, and, and kind of what I use there um is a two cent, four cent, six cent, and eight cent. And why did I do that? Um, your, your current levy is at twenty cents. If you were to go back up to twenty-eight cents, that's the increase that you would have uh based on the current levels. So you'll see there, and let's just kind of go through the, go in the middle, uh, the middle line there. This is the cost to the homeowner. So if there was a person in the city of Maplewood that had a two hundred thousand dollar home, and their tax rate would go from twenty cents to twenty-eight cents, that's an A cent increase. Their increase in their property taxes for that increase would be thirty dollars and forty cent a year. And that comes to two dollars and fifty three cents a month. Going to that twenty-eight cents, uh, back to that two thousand nineteen level. Um, conversely, if there was, if there was a person with a one hundred thousand dollar home in the city of Maplewood, going up to eight cents would be fifteen dollars and twenty cent a year or a dollar twenty-seven a month. And if you look at the three hundred thousand dollar house in the city of Maplewood, then you're looking at forty-five point six cents a year. That comes to three dollars and eight cents a month. Um, if that level should increase to twenty cents from, from actual twenty cents. And you'll see the different marks there, because I, in my original analysis, I looked at just those current levels of twenty-two and twenty-six cents. So I just wanted to show you what those current increases were above the current level, because you're already, those residents are already paying that twenty point one cents. Then uh the next page is for commercial property. Uh, the same um situation happens here. Um, a person with commercial property at a market value of three hundred thousand, uh, that eight cents is gonna take them to about seventy-six dollars and eight cent a year, which comes to about six dollars and forty cent a month. And that was the end of my presentation.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm moving up to any questions.
Yeah. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna, let's see, I'm sorry, we gave you a hand cramp, I'm sorry.
You saw, you saw that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're fine.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Boyd, for, for this presentation. Um. My question, we've talked about this before, um, and so I know council is aware the reason why I set out on this path of understanding bonds and how they could be used was because I was thinking about developing affordable housing. And so I reached out to Mister Boyd because I'm familiar with him from working on the school board, and we talked about it. He told me that you could use bonds to buy land, and then you can work with the develop, developer. Excuse me, but then we went through this budget cycle, and we all saw that our capital improvement fund has fifty-five thousand dollars in it, which is uh very scary low. And so I asked Mister Boyd, can we use this for streets and sidewalks? And he said, absolutely. And so if you would just speak to how we can use bonds, um, I know you told me about clients that are using bonds right now for their streets. If whatever you're able to share with us, if you would, I'd be grateful.
Yes. So I've had clients uh use, uh, different cities use their um, the general obligation capacity for road and sewer improvements, because if you think about road and sewer improvements, when you're looking at geo-bonds, um, the average life, not a construction guy, but usually what they'll tell you is the average life of most of those roads are probably twenty-plus years. So you're amortizing your bonds over a twenty-year period. Then if you're looking at roads and at the magnitude of doing things of significance, you're talking about probably piecemealing, you know, different roads in terms of over a, a staggered timeframe. So most issues in most cities, look at if they have large projects that they want to take on, because they don't have six million dollars in their coffers to do these massive improvements, they look at geo-bonds to pay for those items over a twenty-year period. And that's the way most cities, you know, do meaningful projects. If you don't have that many needs, and obviously you can use that money for other purposes as well. But generally speaking, we, I've had clients use it for road and sewer improvements and different, you know, green space improvements uh throughout Missouri.
So you just have to forgive my ignorance on this question, okay? So if, if, if there's the community, the city of Maplewood passes a bond, and our language says that it is for road improvement, sidewalks, pretty much public works, um. If, if we get some great deal and we don't use all of that money, then we can use it for something else?
That's why you want to have the language in the ballot to say road and sewer improvements and other, and other improvements as necessary. So for instance, if you come through and you work with the construction guys and they has come in way better than you anticipated, we have four million dollars. Everything only comes to three point five million in terms of that. You want to have that catch-all language where you can actually um at the end of your ballot, another improvements as necessary um as deemed necessary by the city council. But you want to make sure, obviously, that you finish all the things that you demonstrated in uh to the, to the residents in terms of that you're gonna do all those critical streets if you kind of outline.
Can I ask a more basic question? Um. So after almost two years on this body, my understanding of municipal finance could still be described as rudimentary. Um, so as I'm understanding, there's those four levels that you've uh shown us in this packet, that the, the lowest level, the, the twenty cents. That is what we're currently at, right? So that means, so we're over collecting on our, our debt obligation, that.
Well, exactly right. So right now, you're at twenty point one cents.
Right.
And.
And we need a fourteen and a half or whatever it was. Nine, yeah.
That's just because, the only reason, your fund balance, I don't know if you want to go back to that level, your fund balance was above that hundred percent level.
Okay.
Yes, and that's, that's a factor of your, your fund balance is supposed to be one hundred percent or less.
Sure.
You're currently over there. So when you put in those numbers, because your fund balance over a hundred percent, I think everyone basically is, is new to this kind of scenario. Those numbers increase, so it's telling you, you only have to levy fourteen point nine cents next year um to, to, to retire that debt that's currently on the books.
Okay, but we are letting the point to whatever it was. So where does that surplus go?
This goes to debt service fund.
Just under the debt service, okay.
Yeah, you can't use can't use those funds for any other purpose. So that money that's in there, it has to be used to pay the debt service. If, if the city should want, they could use some of those funds to pay off, pay down some of their existing debt to where they're under that level. But that's just, uh, that would have to be another conversation.
Sure, and what have we been doing? So this is not happening for the first time this year. This has been happening, right? So is that we just, we're just paying it down extra?
So when Lexi was coming to us and she was like, debt service, yeah, we were doing that.
Any other questions? Was that pretty self-explanatory everything in terms of?
No, it wasn't self-explanatory, like you.
I want to use that, it's a window explanatory.
You did a great job, I think. Um.
I do actually have one question.
Awesome.
The um, the aggregate bonding capacity that you described here. So at our current levy of twenty cents, we can, we could do six million.
Three.
Well, aggregate with the current debt plus whatever we go to, you know, three point whatever million, but that's the aggregate for that twenty cents.
So the, so the most, at the twenty cents level, you can issue three million, two hundred and fifty thousand, that the number was, if you were to go back to that two thousand nineteen level of twenty-eight cents, you can issue sixty million dollars. If you were to keep your, your levy at twenty cents, you would only be able to put that three million, two hundred and fifty thousand on the ballot.
Okay.
And that's what your, um, that's what the amount of bonds that we were saying at that point. Those other levels were just for discussion purposes, because we knew that your level was higher in, in more recent years.
Right, but we could adjust it. Let's say we go to, we would decide to do six million dollars, we could adjust our, our tax levy to twenty-eight cents.
There's other things that we would have to do in terms of your fund balance is too high right now. So when, I'm not sure, when Michael or Lexi goes to do that, we'll have to have discussions about, you know, how you can do that uh presumably before September.
Right, so we could use that that fund balance to pay off.
Some of your existing debt.
Some of the existing debt. Okay.
And that's. That's the only we do that quite often in terms of the fees, is what they call it, um, in terms of paying off debt early, putting it to that working up. But money will move in the city's hands, uh, and it goes to a third party bank. Um, and if you, we purchase securities to actually pull out those bonds um at that maturity rate, um, and those bonds are really well for your books at, at that point.
So I'm piggybacking off of your question. So I'm piggybacking off of your question, and thank you, it was good. So. We could, we could pay off a debt that we have substantially sooner.
With money in the debt service fund, yes, exactly right. And, and it's not going to be. A huge amount because you, you only have five hundred thousand, I think, what was that number? Right. It's just not going to be a huge number, you're talking about probably three hundred thousand or so. Presumably, just so that you would use to pay off that, the debt.
Michael, Lexi, do you have anything to say?
There's a population, the secretary. So you could only have certain fund downs, which is why the fund supply of levels is going down every year. And it would continue to go down, he would pay some off and then.
Exactly right, you're probably looking at your fund balance as five hundred and twenty-five thousand, probably looking maybe three hundred thousand or so. But your current debt is. Three point nine millions, so presumably you'll take it down to three point six million.
Uh, rudimentary questions, but my question is for you, Lexi, um. Then this is such a simple question, so just forgive me, okay? And y'all forgive me too. So when we, when we pay, when the city pays off its debt sooner, what does that look like for, like our cash flow for the city? Do things look a little brighter where we're not talking about raising sales tax?
Now, this is. This is a, a tax rate that we've left specifically to pay off the dirty money we need to bond that we actually have. So this has nothing to do with like our demo fund or anything else. This is strictly, we, we. We got permission to issue bonds and just get money for those bonds to build. A firehouse, to build the firehouse with those, with that money, and then we're paying off debt. It's like paying off your home loan early. You got the money to buy your house, pay off your home loan. Um, unfortunately, you just don't get any extra money.
Thank you. And thank, yeah, thank you, okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Nicholas. Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Mere. Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, um, Mr. Reese, item number five.
Discuss affordable housing set aside ordinance?
This ordinance is huge. Wondered, anybody want to discuss it? So, uh, I want to let y'all know I am. Talking, and you all know this, but I never said it from here. But I have been talking with developers, um, and letting them know that this ordinance was being worked on and coming out of P and Z. Um, and their concern. Has been. What the definition of affordable is. And so this ordinance covers that. And there's a range that we have, starting from section A going to workforce housing. And this ordinance covers that entire range. And so if a developer wanted to, um, seek. Benefits from the city to build, they could do that. But then we did include some type of affordable housing. And in that range, they could look towards what we would call. Workforce housing, which is on the higher end, if you will, of affordable housing. So. Everybody's covered. The nice thing about this ordinance, all of it is nice, but. The, the thing that I really like about the ordinance is, excuse me, it applies to apartment owners. Um, and so if they want to receive some type of benefit, uh, financial benefit from the city. Then they too can get that from us, but they have to make sure that they're carving out units that support our community members. Uh. That would need assistance, you know? So it, it's nice. We, we as the city, actually, it would be you, Mr. Reese. Would need for you to make sure that landlords knew about this. Um, I think oftentimes this council has created. Amazing ordinances to help our people and a lot of people don't know about it. So with this, we'd have to make sure we got the word out to let them know, hey, if you renovate your apartment complex. And you want to have some type of tax benefit from the city, this is what you need to do to get it.
I'm asking, you know, a lot of the research, and all the kind of assistance, um. And then being, being working on it together, yeah. It's, it's not all my comments, so they're already there.
I think it was great, um. My only question is about item six here in the original memo about the eligibility audit. Um, the city retains the right to an eligibility audit should the need ever arise. I'm just curious what that might look like and whether it would be. Like, is that a regular thing or is it just as needed and how, like? What kind of label would it take from the city and that sort of thing?
Anthony, do you want to speak to that?
And the concern was. Um. Due to analogy, college students that have no income, they're living on loans, they're going to school. At, at initial application out, they were, they were working with the original, right, that was going to come. Or seeing there, because what happens when they. Graduate, maybe get a six thing figure job, and then therefore they're no longer. Needing affordable houses. We wanted to make sure it wasn't just that initial application review annually. So as part of a redevelopment agreement, we would put language within that redevelopment agreement. That would better clarify, we just wanted to make sure it's the developer's responsibility to. Work with it, with their tenants to get this documentation on an annual basis. And then, um. It just gives us the ability to audit those, just to make sure that they are meeting their obligation.
There are standards that, um, they follow under the HUD guideline. So I think our plan is we, we recommend. When we get that, um, that they follow the same type of guidelines, so that we're not asking for things. So we're not directing that they ask for things that are not otherwise. Uh, being invited for other types of blowings.
Sir, I didn't see anything, if there's any condition that they do violate that. If you did there, for any consequence to them, you say the game.
Well, that could be part of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay, we'll put those languages in there. Like tech electronics, if they fall below a hundred and fifty employees, they'll avoid.
We could use something very similar.
Essentially, they could lose their tax favor.
Right.
Or their financial incentive.
Right.
Yeah. We could also, I mean. If you wanted to be more explicit, we could be more explicit, but it may violate those, those. They could be brought in municipal court, but I think the better route is the tax. Holding them accountable under the redevelopment, with the tax. They're going to care a lot more about that.
Let's say I have a. Man, you're here, I got a bunch of ups there. That's a day. The fact that they, they, they. Uh, the law, both. Or whatever, whatever. In fact, they, and then it's four years, we find out if there are any. And that P U D is classified. It's not recognized by the.
Right, we could, yes, we could lay out much more detail for that.
What if they don't get a P U D man?
P U D would be. So. P U D would really be. A separate development. In a state of the day. That's how you're going to get it, that's how you're going to require a little while. Waiting to have, have a development agreement that will lay out all these different priorities. So, um, we would audit it each year, request a copy, would just be. Part of an annual renewal process, that probably create a separate database for this, we have multiple. Units, which is the hope, the desire. And if it fell, fell short at that point, like. Like, so the attorney graves that I, I think make the most sense is to gain the, uh, taxes, right? Don't think you want to mess around with it.
Do anybody who replies to the base. It's going to happen. Whether I P U D. Right.
And I'm sure Attorney Gray would go, would go through. And she mentioned, fun has. Basically guidelines for this, uh, want to add to that?
But, well, there were, there are just examples of, um. Look for the, the types of things that you might ask a tenant to provide. It, it wouldn't be. I mean, the tax transfer, for example, but I don't think it's necessary, nor do you think. Have required that you provide a bunch of documents with social security numbers, etc. It's just got to be reasonable. And I just had one other thing, which is that the reason why this is allowed is that the ordinance is not. Require, the, the, the ordinance is not imposing on, um, developers this requirement. Right, the ordinance is saying if you want to enter into a contract with us to get tax incentives, right, you have to. Little bit different, but it, that's what brings us like a Missouri law that, that we can't, uh. Regulate.
Definitely, you mentioned P and C, they actually looked at. We have three other options to. Attorney Gray is. Double check that, that may be very viable, very. It would be the lone option.
I have a question, just the state really timing was. Council's desire to have this on for the July agenda?
Yes.
Um, we just have to have a public hearing post and we can do all that at the July meeting and meet our requirements, so. We're, we're good to go then.
We'll have our, our first and second reading in July and then our final reading in August.
We'll, we'll be able to post and meet all our requirements.
All right, yeah, my bad, I really thought we were going to be, you know, longer than this. I would have started at six thirty.
It's all really original to this, a lot to grow at first, and tremendous, and we need more, a half a dozen more of these. Type of ordinances to really put in place for a while, so. Yeah, so I'm, y'all understand, so. Really common member of all things.
Forgive me. Anthony, I know you're doing a lot of work too. Um, we'll, we'll get to talk about the work that you've done on like the healthy rental homes in, in July. So thank you for that work, yeah. Oh, I just wanted to piggyback off of what you said, where you were just like, you know, we need more ordinances. So I know that, that more are coming from P and Z and, um, they're going to be. If we pass, if, if we pass these ordinances, we will be the only like municipality in the state that has them. So that's great, but then it's also kind of scary because then it's like, yeah, yeah, you know, like, oh, we can't do that. And here's the reasons why, we'll sue. So I just want to kind of let y'all know that that's coming and. We'll, we'll be on some first impression stuff in Missouri if somebody gets mad about what we pass. So, yeah, fun times. Me too. All right. I think so too. Any, any additional discussion on this? I don't know, y'all may have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and if you carries were adjourned?